Okay, if everybody could go ahead and get settled in, we'll go ahead and get started. So now that you're all seated, I'll ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Evening Hearing for June 24th. Let the record reflect that we have Commissioners Milkie and French present. Commissioner O'Quinn is traveling, and so our first item of business is our open public forum, but before we get into that, I just want to give you some general rules for the conduct in the hearing process. This is a legislative session, and this is an opportunity for the Board to hear testimony from the public that would help inform us as we take and make decisions. This is a legislative process, and so we would ask that you be respectful of speakers, no clapping, jeering, booing, anything else, no kind of outward expression, either positive or negative to either any of the speakers. We ask that you speak to the issue and not make personal attacks either on staff, other speakers, or the Board. If you have a phone, I ask that you turn it off, or turn it on mute or vibrate. If you do have to take a call, please step out in the foyer and take it so that we don't disrupt anybody that's speaking and providing testimony in the process. We do provide three minutes to each speaker, and can you?
Yes.
We do have a digital timer that I'll be operating. It's high-tech because it has the appropriate amount of duct tape on it, and so as we get close to the end of the three minutes, I'll try and give you a high sign so that you can wrap up your comments and be respectful of everybody else that wants to speak behind you. If you have already heard somebody make the same statements that you were planning on making, feel free to just say, "I agree with" that speaker, and we can then acknowledge that in the record. When you do come to the microphone, we ask that you give us your name and address so that we can accurately record who is here and providing testimony to whatever the issue is that's before us. If there are two or three of you that are here that are sharing the same comment, and you want one of you to speak on behalf of the group, please let me know, and we will adjust the time accordingly so you can represent the interest of the people that you're speaking on behalf of. So with that, we will go ahead and start the evening with our first item, which is an open public forum. Oh, and if you want to provide testimony on any of the hearing items before us this evening, we ask that you fill out one of the yellow slips. This one puts you in the queue, so we just go through, first come, first served, in terms of your order of speakers. You can indicate that you want to testify, and then the issue that you want to testify on, and then when we get to that, we'll just take the names in the order that they are submitted. If during the course of the evening you decide that, "Oh geez, I want to respond to that," please get a yellow slip, and then, as the gentleman here is doing, fill it out and submit it to the clerk, and we will put you in the queue. So like I said, three minutes for each speaker this evening, and we'll try and go through this as expeditiously as possible. This is a hearing, this is not a debate, so we will not engage in back-and-forth debate with any of the folks that are providing testimony. Again, this is for you to provide information for us to help inform us as we make a decision that hopefully reflects the desires of the community. So with that, like I said, the next item on the agenda is the open public forum. I do not have anybody that signed up for making any comments to the Board. Of course, the open forum is to speak on any issue that's not on our agenda, so since I don't have any sign-up sheets, I'll ask, is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide any testimony as part of the open forum? Is there anybody who would like to provide any testimony as part of the open forum? So third and final call for anybody wanting to provide testimony. Seeing none, I'll close the open public forum. Then moving into hearing item number four, this is to consider vacating a portion of Long Lake Road, road file numbers 619 and 1346. Mr. Brueggerman.
Good evening, Board members. Bob Brueggerman, Spokane County Engineer. Item number four is a public hearing to consider the vacation of portions of Long Lake Road, road file number 619, and file 1346. These portions are generally located south of Lake Spokane in the northwest portion of Spokane County. This petition was initiated by Spokane County to complete an agreement brought to our attention during a design review meeting with the Avista Corporation. When Long Lake Road, project number 1879, constructed the present alignment of Long Lake Road, portions of the old right-of-way remain that were separated from the current alignment and were no longer necessary for the future use of Long Lake Road. The two portions supposed to be vacated are useless to the future public right-of-way needs and are no longer needed as part of the county roadway system. We did receive a communication from Avista Corporation, a short letter, that did ask that if these portions of right-of-way were vacated, that easement be reserved for their electrical transmission and distribution facilities. The need for the easement, I'm not real sure of, since if these portions of right-of-way were vacated, since Avista owns on both sides of them the property, would we revert back to Avista as the future owners of this right-of-way? But they did ask for this easement, and upon querying the need for that, I have not gotten a response back from them yet, so I would recommend that, since it is not an encumbrance on the public, I would recommend that the easements be granted and that these two segments of old right-of-way for Long Lake Road be vacated.
Okay, Commissioner Milkie.
So Bob, just to be clear, I'm assuming that the darker shaded areas are where the existing right-of-way is?
The darker shade areas are the areas under consideration at night to be vacated.
So, and these are all dirt or gravel roads?
Actually, these are just right-of-way, and there is no usable roadway on this previous alignment right-of-way. There may be wheel tracks for decades-old use, but there is no usable roadway on these portions.
Okay, so, because what it looks like to me is, oh great, the batteries do work. So if this was the right-of-way that exists legally, same thing up here, and it looks like as people have used it over the years, they've developed a shortcut, and for whatever, to whatever extent that it has traveled, that this is the default pattern, right there?
Actually, it's more than a default pattern. The county, back about 30 years ago, did have a reconstruction project and did purchase right-of-way and realign the roadway to the current paved portion of roadway.
Is that for both sections?
Both sections, yes.
Oh, okay, so it's not just the default, it is?
It was planned.
We have two legal right-of-ways at those two bins?
That is correct.
Okay, all right.
Okay, any other questions?
And are we able to designate a utility right-of-way without? Well, I guess, I guess if we've already previously designated these right-of-ways, then we have, we have the ability to acknowledge a utility easement.
Yes, the intent is, the narrow strip of a parcel that you see traversing through here is the current transformation and distribution line, so it does cross this right-of-way in both locations, and that was typically the intent of reserving an easement for the existing and future use of those utility lines.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Brueggerman. This is a hearing item, and I do not believe we have anybody signed up to provide any testimony on this item, so I will call for anybody in the audience that would like to provide any testimony on hearing item number four, which is to consider vacation of a portion of Long Lake Road, road file numbers 619 and 1346. Second call for anybody wanting to provide any testimony on hearing item number four. Third and final call for anybody who would want to provide any testimony on hearing item number four. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and look to my fellow commissioners for a motion. Commissioner Milkie?
Okay. You said commissioners, plural, I just thought there might be someone else up here. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion then that with regard to, I would make a motion that we do indeed vacate a portion of Long Lake Road as described in road file number 1513 and as presented by staff, and this would acknowledge that, so not only are we vacating, I would say, the old right-of-way, replacing it with the newer right-of-way, but that we would also be acknowledging the utility right-of-way through this, these portions that are going to continue to exist.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion passes by a 2-0 vote with Commissioner O'Quinn not present. Then moving on to hearing item number five, again, Mr. Brueggerman. This is to consider vacating Spring Creek Extension, road file number 1513.
This item is also a public hearing to consider vacation. This segment of roadway is the Spring Creek Extension, road file number 1513, generally located east of State Route 395 and north of the city of Deer Park. This petition was initiated by Mr. John Crowe, the owner of all the property adjacent to the proposed vacation, and the petition was also signed by the Deer Park School District, which has a bus barn facility at the south end of the proposed vacation. I reviewed the proposed vacation and provided direction to Mr. Crowe that a condition of this vacation would be the dedication and construction of a turnaround at the end of the usable portion of Spring Creek Road, and subject to that, I would recommend approval of the vacation of Spring Creek Extension as the proposed vacation, vacated right-of-way does not have any future public use for the county roadway system and would be a benefit to the general public to remove it from public ownership. The Board has any questions on this item? I can address those at this time.
Any questions? Very good, thank you. So again, this is a hearing item, and I will open up the hearing for anybody that would like to provide any testimony on this. We do not have anybody signed up, so I will ask, is there anybody in the audience who would like to provide any testimony on hearing item number five? Second call for anybody looking to provide any testimony on hearing item number five. Third and final call for anybody who would like to provide testimony on the vacation of Spring Creek Extension.
So, so I think our clerk of the Board will catch that. Thank you for that catch. I guess I was so anxious to get to the meat of the hearing, I was just skipping through this stuff really fast, so. So I do stand corrected, and just so that the record picks it up, the previous, the previous vote, the previous motion was pertaining to item number four on the agenda, and that would be in reference to road file numbers 619 and 1346. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And so this will be the third and final call for anybody who would like to provide any testimony on hearing item number five, consider vacating Spring Creek Extension, road file number 1513. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'm going to close the hearing and look to my fellow commissioner for direction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With regard to item number five on this evening's agenda, I would move that we approve the vacation of Spring Creek Extension, road file number 1513, as presented by staff this evening.
I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Milkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a chance to review this application. As was mentioned, the, it was a couple of parcels. Mr. Crowe bought all of them. He does not intend to keep them as separate parcels, and instead wants a working farm, which means that we would have a county road right-of-way that extends deep into the middle of his property. Instead, this would end it at the edge of his property, and right at the edge of his property, I believe he's also working with the Deer Park School District. It's their bus barn. There was a little bit of a mishap where I think the building was actually built on his property, so he's doing some lot-line adjustments, and then I think working with the school district to make sure that the turnaround will be there that our county engineer described.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion, please begin by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion passes by a 2-0 vote. Then moving on to item number six, this is a hearing to consider renewal of the interim zoning ordinance adopted by the Board of County Commissioners of Spokane County for production of recreational marijuana in the light industrial zone and other matters related thereto, adopted under Resolution Number 14-0029 and affirmed under Resolution Number 14-0172, and I think we have Mr. Peterson here to do introductions on the topic.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the record. John Peterson, Planning Director. As you've introduced, we have two public hearings tonight. The first is the purpose to consider affirmation of the interim zoning ordinance adopted in Resolution 14-0029 and affirmed under 14-0172 for an additional six-month period. As you recall, this initial interim ordinance was adopted on January 7th of 2014 after we adopted our initial policy regulating recreational marijuana, and in this interim ordinance that was very specific to limiting production of recreational marijuana in the light industrial zone to indoor facilities only. And as we've since evolved into a series of other interim ordinances, it's necessary to affirm this for an additional six-month period while we look at drafting permanent regulations to the zoning code that would be consistent with these interim ordinances. So that is the purpose of tonight's public hearing, is to, again, reaffirm this for an additional six-month period, and should you choose to do that, I've provided the Madam Clerk with a resolution to that effect.
Before you leave the podium, could you give us just a real brief description of why we do this as interim ordinances, and we just don't pass the final ordinance?
These are done as an interim measure to essentially allow time for the county to provide a separate and distinct process to make permanent regulations and amendments to the zoning code. That takes an additional process, working through the Planning Commission and then their recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. You adopted this interim ordinance as a means to regulate an activity that wasn't previously regulated regarding the production of recreational marijuana in the light industrial zone, and the decision by the Board was to limit that to an indoor facility only so that the light industrial zone would not be absorbed by outdoor grow operations, and then have the ability to have facilities and infrastructure available for those indoor grow operations.
Okay, and one of the other challenges that not only Spokane County, but counties across the state have had is that the state has adopted definitions of terms that we find that are inconsistent with either our local ordinances or other practices and stuff, so part of the challenge we've had is trying to harmonize what the state's directives are with, and making compatible with our existing zoning ordinances, and finding ways to achieve the state mandate while at the same time maintaining the integrity of some of our other light industrial uses within the zone. So, any questions for Mr. Peterson? Commissioner Milkie?
Not necessarily a question, I guess more of a comment, and that was, you know, I think, I think as we've been trying to figure out how to implement all the nuances of Initiative 502, one of our, I think one of our priorities was to try to insulate neighborhoods from commercial grow operations, commercial processing operations, and those kinds of things, and so we did look at the light industrial zones as a way to, to insulate those neighborhoods. But we also recognized that this community has spent a lot of money installing infrastructure in light industrial areas. I mean, it was really designed for light industry in some of the other areas, heavy industry, and so we tend to upsize all of our infrastructure. It's all ready to go. I know if you take a look at out by Spokane International Airport, we have done everything we can to lay the groundwork for aerospace industries, and whether that be another, another production line for Boeing 737, whether it be one of their, their top-tier suppliers. And so our thought on this was, was I would hate to see that investment that the community has made in that infrastructure be turned into agricultural fields, and so we said, you know, what is the balance? The balance is that with regard to the commercial processing, the commercial grows that would tend to be bigger, that we would want them to utilize some of those, those potentially vacant buildings that are in light industrial areas and move that indoors as opposed to simply foregoing using those areas. And so, so that is really trying to be clearer with regard to how we use light industrial areas and how it would, I guess, merge, if you will, with, with Initiative 502. So, so that's the rationale, is at some point, somebody's going to have to do their business plan, and when you take a look at the cost of, of real estate and facilities in light industrial, whether this becomes the preferred use, or whether there's some other light industrial use that just pencils out a little bit better in a business plan.
And those, that rationale is expressed in your previous resolutions that adopted this, and is the affirmation as well, and those findings are continued in the proposed resolution for you tonight.
I mean, really, light industrial areas are, are intended to be job, job host, job-producing areas, and, and most often agricultural uses don't produce the same number of jobs. They produce jobs, but they don't produce the same number of jobs as, say, a manufacturing operation or things like that.
So we do have two hearing items tonight. One is with regard to the interim zoning ordinance for the light industrial zone. The second one deals with the setbacks associated with the different categories and stuff, and so we'll take testimony on hearing item number six first, which is the light industrial zone. I do have some folks that are signed up for both six and seven, and I'm, I'm going to treat it as though you wanted to provide testimony on both, but if we get to that and you decide, "Well, I really wanted to provide testimony on one or another and not both," then just let me know, and we can, we can adjust accordingly. So we're going to start, and I won't start the timer until you're at the podium and ready to speak and stuff, so don't feel like you have to run down to the podium to get here because the clock is ticking. We don't do that to you. And I will not only identify the current speaker, but the one, the next speaker, so that if the next speaker does want additional time to get to the front, you can do that while the first one is speaking. So the first speaker I have signed up is Barbara Hooper, and then following Ms. Hooper, I've got Harold Hooper, so. Oh, and then one last thing in advance, if I mispronounce your name, it is not as an intentional act, it's just that either I was not able to correct the pronunciation or was not able to read accurately the way you spelled your name and stuff, so if I do misspell your name, or mispronounce your name in advance, I apologize, so. your name in advance, I apologize. So...
It says, "Don't touch it," so I was reading...
Yeah. The microphones are directional, meaning you do have to speak right into the end of them for them to be able to pick up your voice and stuff. So, thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Barbara Hooper, one five six oh two North Forker Road, Spokane, Waukegan, nine nine two one seven. My husband and I have lived in the rural foothills area for forty-four years. We raised our family there, and we love it. We are one of ten households within two hundred yards of this marijuana-growing shop building at the intersection of Mount Spokane Park Drive and Forker Road. If you go out five hundred yards, you get fifteen households, which together pay over forty thousand a year in taxes. We all have a huge investment in our households, and we are concerned that you are doing what you are doing to our property value. The metal building fencing with barbed wire looks like something left over from World War II, better suited to an industrial park than a rural countryside. We invite you to come out and look at the site that does not fit in with our atmosphere. Oh, and if any of you are tourists and are traveling to Mount Spokane, I'm sure the tourists are going to be pleased to see what has occurred in our neighborhood. They are there for recreational and to portray our area as a friendly, loving place, not something with barbed wire and metal. This was put in place, growing marijuana without any public notice, to our neighborhood. Who would do that to us taxpayers? I think it's just awful. Now, someone is changing the requirements for a tier-one permit to fit this particular site of three point eight acres, changing the acreage from eight acres to three acres. What in the world is going on here? First, you come out there, and you put all this marijuana stuff there, and you don't even put up a sign. If I wanted to put up a daycare, I'd have to post it. But there was no sign, and the state said that they have to put up a sign, and somebody waived that requirement. And I just hope you'll come out and look at yourself to see what eyesore this is. You may think we live in the boonies, but it is our rural community, and we love it there. And this is not adding to our delight.
Thank you. So, we did receive some correspondence from a number of folks that were evidently informed by the state that there was some kind of notice provision required. And so, just to be able to clear the record on this, Mr. Peterson, would you provide some additional information? Commissioner Milkie, please.
Mr. Chairman, so, the property that was just described in the foothills is not a light industrial zone property.
Not.
It is an agricultural zone. And I know we're going to hit that topic in the next item.
Yes.
So, I'm wondering, just to maintain clarity between item number six and item number seven. So, item number six is only properties that are zoned light industrial. And I'm thinking, maybe we should just go ahead and complete our discussion on the light industrial. And then, when we switch to the agricultural zone lands, then I think that we can go ahead and pick up on this discussion with regard to notifications and others. Again, I think if we start jumping back and forth, we create some confusion about what regulations apply to which zoning.
Yeah. The only challenge I have is that I don't have on the sign-up slips until they start speaking, whether they understand that there is a difference between six and seven, light industrial, and then the setbacks and stuff. And so, that's why I thought at least getting some clarity on that early on might help inform those that are signed up for number six to talk about the notice and everything. At least they'd get that before they came up and testified.
Understood.
So, I know that it's a little bit, you know, the way that folks have signed up to testify, there is, yeah, we tried to explain the differences, but I'm not sure everybody appreciated that. And I certainly want to be able to respect and have everybody testify. But I don't want to have folks come up here and then find out after the fact that, oh, the state was maybe not as accurate in their comments to people as the law actually dictates. And that's why I thought I'd have Mr. Peterson, you know, at least lay that out early on. Even though his comments are related to seven and not six, I don't know what these sign-up sheets are for. Okay? So, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, John Peterson, again, in response to the comments just made by Ms. Hoover, the Liquor Control Board, you know, has a responsibility to issue the licenses for production, processing, and retail sale of recreational marijuana. There is no requirement under their WACs, or the RCWs, that requires the state to require the applicant to notify adjacent property owners, nor is there a requirement for the state of Washington to notify Spokane County to provide notice to adjacent property owners when someone has issued a license for production, processing, and retail sale. The state of Washington is required to notify the county legislative body of the pending license application. We respond to those and provide comments back to the state, but that is not a public notice. And there is no public notice requirement that has been waived in any way, shape, or form by Spokane County or the Liquor Control Board, to my knowledge. There is nothing in the WACs and the RCWs that I've reviewed that requires any kind of notice, again, for issuance of these kind of specific licenses.
But I think typically, when notification is required, that notification is borne by the person issuing, the entity issuing the permit.
Correct.
So, in other instances, in land use, where we are the issuer of the permit, in some cases, we do have a notification requirement that we pass on to the applicant, and they post signs.
That is correct.
In this case, we're not the one issuing the permit.
That is correct.
And so, Liquor Control Board falls back on its own rules, or lack thereof, in how they interpret it. And I think that's, again, part of my frustration, is different people get different responses every time you call the Liquor Control Board. And that's a continued frustration that I have.
Essentially, the notice provisions that are in the county subdivision ordinance and the zoning code require a notification of property owners when there's a specific type of land use action that's defined in the zoning code that requires notice, be it a conditional use permit, or a variance, or a subdivision application. All of those require some form of public notice. There is no public notice required for a use which is an outright permitted use. The only notice that's specific to a use is, that's permitted is if you acquire a building permit, you actually place the permit on the face of the structure. But that's not, again, it's not provided to adjacent property owners. There's no posting requirement or anything like that.
So, and just for the record, the county has not waived any posting requirements as it relates to any of these applications.
That's correct.
Thank you. So, next person to sign up is Harold Hooper, and he has asked that Mr. Mike Britton speak on his behalf. Mr. Britton?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm glad for the opportunity to come speak for you, to you tonight. My name is Mike Britton. I'm the president of the Foothills Rural Association. I live at one three five zero two North Forker Road, Spokane, Washington, nine nine two one seven. I agree with the interim ordinance discussion on item number six regarding light industrial indoor uses. I don't disagree with that at all. My discussion that I want to have with you in the hearing today is regarding notification processes. The county has not notified all affected parcels that have to do with the regulations that are being modified to permit, you know, the specific regulations that permit marijuana-growing operations in the rural classifications. And if that goes to item number seven, I could speak at that time if you prefer that.
Either, yeah.
Either way, go ahead and speak to it now. That's fine.
Okay. Basically, the county processes affect approximately, I'm going to guess, maybe ninety percent of Spokane County. In other words, in Spokane County, with the grow operations permitted by the state, of course, that means that anybody that has rural classifications, and there's about five or six of those, you can grow any marijuana operation you want out there, both indoor or outdoor, if you got the provisions that you itemize in agenda item number seven. My issue is that persons in the rural classifications aren't able to find out about these land use changes without the county following through and identifying where this applies. When a land use change like this occurs, it applies to all rural classifications. It doesn't apply just to the foothills. It doesn't apply to, you know, the Whitman County line. It applies to every rural classification. And so, that notification, in our opinion, should be made to all of those persons, what it will apply in the interim regulations that the planning department's trying to put in place that permit the growing operations that aren't currently, well, weren't previously identified before the Initiative five oh two was passed. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? The proposed land use change doesn't consider the neighborhood impacts. There's no opportunity for the neighborhood to address impacts, the negative impacts that come with the growing operation in a rural area. Those impacts could be a lot of things. The additional lighting that's needed, both for security inside and outside the growing operations, the infrastructure that's needed for those, the water and electrical use. One of the things that really concerns me is the waste. I don't know where that waste is going to go. If they have an accident with some of the products that they use for packaging, or rinsing soils, or whatever they do, can those get into the OCFA? I hear your timer going off. Hal was kind of trying to give me my three minutes, and then...
Yeah. I'm giving you some extra time to finish it, because you're speaking to both items and stuff. So, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, and then, you know, the potential crime, you know, being an attractive nuisance, almost like a pool without a fence around it, you know, there may be, especially if it's an outdoor grow operation, you've got to keep people out of there. And people are going to be, even high school kids, trying to sneak in there, just like they do, like we did when we were younger, those kind of things. So, the twenty-four hours of watching a rural place has an impact to the neighborhood. The wildlife, you know, a lot of lights out there, traffic, people stopping by to look at it. One of the interesting things about the law, if you read it, way down in the bottom, it says there that they can hand out free samples. They can hand out one half, or two grams, per person, per month. And it doesn't say that they can't do that at a growing operation. So, I'm thinking, how many people are going to be pounding on the door saying, "I'd like a free sample?" These types of things are all unaddressed, and the impacts aren't being given an opportunity to be aired in the public, if you know what I'm trying to say. The Liquor Control Board, I'm sure they do a good job. Their agenda is the packaging, the tracking of the seeds, all of the administrative part, and the making and tracking of the money. It doesn't address the negative impacts to the neighborhood, and that's why I feel that the county needs to work on a process where we can address those negative impacts, if you know what I'm trying to say. We don't have a CEPA process here at all, and that's quite often what's addressed in a general way with land use regulations. One of the concerns I have is Greenbluff is, I used to be a county planning commissioner, and one of the things is Greenbluff was an ongoing issue for, what, about thirty, forty, fifty years now. And it has to do with the conversion of agricultural into commercial uses. And I kind of see that that's a potential here, too, that these can eventually evolve into an entertainment site, a place where they can come and see it grown, or evolve into maybe a commercial retail-type use. And those all have a lot more impact than just a production facility. So, my final recommendation is basically pretty simple, that marijuana production is same as other industrial uses, in my opinion. It should be located in industrial areas. They produce a product. It requires infrastructure, police protection. For example, the foothills has relatively slow police response time because of cutaways out there. We have about four hundred and thirty individual residents in our neighborhood, and the neighborhood is particularly concerned about it. I don't represent the neighborhood. I'm just trying to get some of the information that I hear from them out there. My final recommendation is that it should be a conditional use permit. I would recommend that you do that. Basically, that puts in a format that an individual site can address its individual impacts. And those should be reasonable, and the person that has the property is entitled to any legal responsible use of his property, up to the point where it diminishes or affects the neighbors. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Britton, Commissioner Milkie?
Yeah. So, I'm trying to think of all the meetings I've sat through on this topic with the Municipal Research Council, with the Liquor Control Board, with legislators. And so, a couple of the things is, when local governments were first, I don't know if you want to say requested, told, to implement five oh two, and we sat with attorneys trying to figure out what the ramifications were, the issue was, where does this fit into your zoning code? And I think that the message that we received from Municipal Research Council, and from a number of legislators, was it's an agricultural product, and we expect it to be treated somewhat on par with other agricultural products. And so, that was our initial drill, was really to go through and say, if you take a look at the zoning code that we have, where would it fit? Does it fit anywhere? And I think that's really why we took a look at, for the production, it's an agricultural product, and probably makes sense to be with other agricultural products, with the exception of, what about those that want to do indoor grows? Where do they go? And with regard to indoor grows, I know we've been involved in a year-long debate about how do you get, the minute you go indoor on a grow, it's a commercial building, and how do you get fire flow in a rural area that doesn't have hydrants? So, the issue is, if you're going to do an indoor grow, most likely, you're going to be in a light industrial area that's got that infrastructure. Several times, you mentioned, when there's a change of use, change of land use, you know, you should have a public process to vet it. In this case, though, it's not a change of land use, it's a change of crop. And I, because I've sat back and tried to think about this, is, okay, I've got people who have current farmland that's being farmed for other crops, other products, and are now switching over and using part of their acreage now for this type of operation. So, the question is, do we have a precedent? Is that a change in land use? Is it still agricultural, and they're still, and they're changing product, changing crops, you know, or are we actually changing the land use, and we're going from an agricultural zone, like a rural traditional zone, to something else? And in that case, we're not changing the land use designation. With regard to, you said, you know, this applies countywide, and I totally agree with you, because you're right. It's an agricultural crop, and all of a sudden, it can pop up in any agricultural area. How do we deal with this? And so, we have had a few now, public hearings, and tried to say, what should this look like? What should the limitations be? And when we do get to number seven, and get to that language, you know, prior to the last meeting, we didn't have any real regulations with regard to setbacks, minimum acreage, nothing. And it was based on comments from citizens that did show up at those hearings and say, you know, I think it's reasonable to have those setbacks. And when we tried to figure out what was reasonable, what we did is, we said, in an agricultural zone, what are some of the most impactful uses on your neighbor that we could think of in an agricultural zone? And so, what we did is, we looked at setback requirements for feedlots. We looked at setback requirements for pig farms, trying to think of some of the other ones that we looked at, landfills, and what were the setbacks for those. And in many cases, the setbacks for those were fifty feet or less. And so, what we did is, when we, and like I say, when we get to number seven, we'll talk about this more. So, what we did is, we took the high end. And so, it's the same setbacks that you see for things like feedlots and landfills, and those things that would tend to be pretty impactful to neighbors. And so, that's really where we started. And the last meeting that we had, when we adopted that interim ordinance, we went from having no language on setbacks, and we went to that. So, that's kind of where we're at. That's the draft language that we have before us. And when we do get to number seven, you know, the discussion tonight is, should we continue that language? Should we back away from that language? Is it too strict? And really, that's what it is. We did what we call an emergency interim ordinance, which is throw something together, hope it addresses the needs, because we continue to hear from people about specific nuances, and we're like, wow, we never thought about that. And then, the law says, you've got to come back and have a public hearing within sixty days on whatever you do on an emergency basis. And that's really tonight's hearing on number seven, is we threw together this emergency ordinance, we threw together language based on the comments we were getting in emails and telephone calls and letters. And then, now we're at that point where we're having a public hearing within sixty days to say, are we close? say, are we close? Did we totally miss the mark? Should we repeal it? What should we do? And so, that, like I say, I'm expecting a lengthy discussion on item number seven.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
May Commissioners, I think...
We might have to turn that button down a little bit.
Also, kind of to respond a little bit to what Mr. Britton said, and Commissioner Milkie, the public process that Mr. Britton described is what happens after you adopt an interim ordinance. Interim ordinance is essentially is a placeholder that then allows staff to craft permanent or long-term amendments to the zoning code. And that process is a very public process that is available to anyone who's present. They can be placed on a notification list to receive public notice. That does require a public hearing before the planning commission, and then their recommendation is forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for your consideration. So again, the interim ordinance is a temporary placeholder, and then the very public process then follows with that public input to determine, again, other recommendations and concerns of the public that then would come before the board to result in permanent changes to your development regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other comments, Commissioner Milkie? So, then moving on, our next speaker is Kristi Sorenzia. You want to be on number seven? Great, thank you. So then, my next speaker is Max Johnson. Then Rochelle Swizzler? Okay. I'm sensing a theme here. Ingrid Severs?
I wish to speak.
Okay. Six is looking better and better all the time. Frank Shade?
I wish to speak.
Okay.
Good afternoon and evening, Commissioner Milkie in French. Esteemed members of the panel here, as well as everybody who's attended tonight, I appreciate everybody's time this evening. I would first just like to pick up and address some of the issues from a couple, you know, what I notice here, I guess, is a general understanding of the rules, a general lack of education, and it's nobody's fault, this is a new process to everyone, on how everything works. Just to go back a little bit, I am the owner of the property and question it, Forker Road and Mount Spokane, and that is my commercial farm there. And just to go back, I have done no changes, that fence has been there for about 20 years. The building and the property looks exactly the same as it did when I took over my lease there, so I don't feel as though I've created an eyesore. I've added one brand-new building that's rather attractive, and other than that, it's just the way it stood before I lived there, or before I moved in there. There are no free sample giving. Once all the rules and everybody understands all the education on this, I'm allowed to give a free sample to a state liquor board-certified retail store owner only. I can't give anything to the general public. I am not a retail store, I am a tier-one small marijuana farm. And as I've heard some of the comments behind me, yes, my crop is there, my crop is indoors, I'm an indoor farmer, there's never going to be an outdoor farm there, or any kind of attracting marijuana farm. It's been in operation for, going on eight weeks now. I was the seventh license awarded in the state, and so, it was about six weeks before it caught everyone's attention, and I found myself on the news last, or two Fridays ago. And so, also, the signage, I'm required to not have a sign. I'm absolutely not allowed to have a sign, and I'm requested to operate as low-key as possible. Just, also, as far as things like waste, hopefully we can get together and talk about some of these issues. There, I'm very restricted by the Liquor Control Board. My operation's a very green operation, and has literally zero waste. I will be reusing my soil and things of that nature, but I have absolutely no possibilities of contaminations. I use only certified, healthy, organic fertilizers and pesticides, they're all properly well-kept, and again, I have no waste. And any waste that I do have is mandated by the state on how exactly I am to make a manifest with the Liquor Control Board, have it escorted down to the recycling facility where it's destroyed. And I just think, I noticed a lot of the concerns of the general public, I have a funeral to get to, so I'll try to wrap this up quickly. It just seems to be a lack of general understanding and just, you know, how everything truly works. There's a producer, there's a processor, and there's a retail store. I'll never sell any marijuana at my store. My wife and I work there, and that is the only two employees that you'll ever see there. Before my father passed away, he helped me build that site, and other than that, it is just going to be the two of us working there. We work, I haven't quit my day job yet, because nothing's certain here with I-502, so I'm working really hard. And I would like to say...
Your time is wrapped up, so if you could give us a closing statement?
Thank you, closing statement. I really appreciate the community, I have no ill feelings towards the community, I appreciate the pride in that community, it makes me want to be part of it all the more. I promise, as I've already demonstrated, I will continue to clean up that property, unwanted loitering's not tolerated. And again, in closing, I just hope that I can be invited to the next community meeting, so I can also help answer some of your questions, and we can have, create a discussion. Because, once again, all the comments and everything that I'm hearing back here, as far as crime, which is unfounded, there's been no more crime there, and there will not be.
Okay, we've got it. Thank you. All right. Thank you. And then, the last person signed up for item number six is Antoinette Mantes.
I'd like to speak to seven.
Thank you. That then completes the list of all the people that have signed up for item number six. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to provide any testimony on hearing item number six that hasn't signed up yet? Is there anybody that would like to provide any testimony in hearing item number six? Third and final call for anybody wanting to provide any testimony on hearing item number six. Seeing none, I will close the public meeting and look to my fellow commissioner for direction. Commissioner Milkie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to item number six on this evening's agenda, I would like to move that we renew the interim zoning ordinance adopted by the Board of County Commissioners for production of recreational marijuana in the light industrial zone, adopted initially under Resolution Number 14-0029, and affirmed under Resolution Number 14-0172.
Okay, I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Commissioner Milkie?
I guess this goes to a legal question with regard to my motion. My understanding is, this was an emergency ordinance, we're having our public hearing tonight on this, so if we, actually, we've already had our public hearing on this once before. So, we've gotten to the end of the first...
60 days.
The first six-month period? Six-month period? And so, we need to keep renewing it, so it doesn't lapse until such time as we go ahead and plug it into the formal process, and it goes before the Planning Commission for public hearings and all that. So, tonight, the purpose of my motion is then to renew it. My assumption is, my motion automatically renews it for six months. Is that correct? Do I need to specify a time period?
It couldn't hurt.
All right. So, Madam Clerk, if I may, just hopefully as a friendly amendment to my motion, my intent is that, my motion is to renew the interim zoning ordinance for a period of six months, as stipulated under state law.
And the second accepts the friendly amendment. Okay, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please, if you keep a saying aye?
Aye.
Let the record reflect the motion passes by a 2-0 vote, with Commissioner O'Quinn not present. So, the next item on our agenda is hearing item number seven. And so, Mr. Peterson, if you could do a brief introduction, and then we'll get into the hearing on item number seven.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number seven is the next item on your agenda. This, purpose of this public hearing is the mandated 60-day public hearing after adoption of an interim zoning ordinance. That interim zoning ordinance, under consideration tonight, was adopted on May 5th, under Resolution In that resolution, that interim ordinance, it specifically identified the setbacks for marijuana production and processing in the rural zoning designations as, for structures from 100 feet to a front property line, 50 feet to a side rear or flanking street setback, and 300 feet from adjoining residence, other than the residence of the owner. And built into those setback standards was the provision of a waiver to reduce each of those setbacks by 50 feet, if in fact, that property owner could obtain that waiver from an adjacent property owner. 50%, I'm sorry, 50%. Also, in that resolution, you specified that the minimum lot size for a tier-one producer was three acres minimum, and for tier-two and tier-three producers, the minimum lot size is five acres. Also, in that resolution, it reiterated the previous department policies and previous interim ordinances specified that production is allowed in our rural and resource lands in rural Spokane County, and packaging and labeling is also permitted in our rural lands, provided, it's just limited to packaging, labeling of usable marijuana products. And again, the specification of the setbacks and the waiver and the minimum lot sizes. So again, and it also reiterates the fact that retail sale is limited to the regional commercial zone only, and the light industrial zones.
John, do you have the data with you as far as, for a tier-one, tier-two, tier-three operation, the square footage on those? I'm sure there's people in the audience that can tell me that.
I do not have those in front of me, but I'm sure someone in the audience probably has those right at their fingertips, if not...
I'm going to guess, tier-one, is it 1,400 square feet? Is that right?
Yeah, 1,400.
Tier-two? 7,000 square feet? And tier-three is the biggest one?
21,000.
21,000, thank you so much. And so, and my point in asking for that is, when people said, "How did you develop your minimum acreage requirement?", what we did is, we took, like I say, what we tried to do is take the most impactful land use allowed in an agricultural zone. Again, a stockyard feedlot, pig farm, landfill, and what we said is, is what are the setbacks required for those uses? What we then did is, and maybe we built it from the inside out, what we said is, if you need 1,400 square feet, if you assumed it's square, and then you added the buffers all the way around it, as has been proposed, what would you end up with acreage? And then we rounded up to the next higher acreage. So, for example, the language that I hope everyone has in front of them, because this is a language that did not exist prior to the last hearing, and this is really what our discussion is tonight, is, should we walk away from this language and just let this language lapse? Should we maintain this language, or should we amend this language? And so, when you take a look at the tier-one, for example, the tier-one production facility is a minimum of three acres, what we did is, we took that 1,400 square feet that would be required for that production, and then we built the buffer around it, and said, what would the acreage calculate out as? So, that's how we got there, trying to put a little bit of reasoning behind these numbers.
And also, in these resolutions, in the most recently adopted interim ordinance, it also specifies that the Liquor Control Board standards are, must also be met in addition to the county's interim standards, that doesn't...
Thousand feet from schools.
As far as the required spacing from 1,000 feet from daycare schools and other public use facilities. And so, those are monitored by the state, but those have to be met in addition to these standards. And that's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Peterson?
I'm sure I'll come up with some.
Okay. So, we made it through item six, you've got a general sense about how we're going to go through item seven. The, I have approximately 30 sheets, three minutes apiece, means we're going to be here for a minimum of an hour and a half, assuming that everybody runs real fast up to the podium, which I don't expect, so we're probably going to be here for a couple hours. So, if you can make sure that you get all your thoughts out, again, if somebody else has already said it, feel free to say, "I agree with whoever that speaker is," either pro or con, and stuff. So, with that, the first speaker that I have signed up is Kristi Sorenzia.
When you talked about the initial zoning, oh, I'm sorry, Kristi Sorenzia, 9919 East Aspen Creek Lane, Colbert, Washington, 9900...